Ms. Pat.
Present.
Mr. Whalen.
Here.
Ms. Wyman.
Here.
Mayor Sathaswait.
Here. First item on our agenda this evening is approval of the minutes of the previous meeting that would have been for July 6th. Is there a motion?
A move to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any corrections or additions? Questions? Seeing none, all those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Any additions or corrections to the agenda this evening? Okay, we'll move on to petitions and communications. If there's anybody that would like to speak to the council for a period of no more than five minutes, if you'll pick up one of these white cards at the back of the council chambers and bring it up to myself or the clerk, you'll have a chance to do so. First, we have Jeff Ruffner of 1406 East Pennsylvania on a topic of ward maps.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight I ask this council to remedy the inadequate representation by this very board. My friends and neighbors on the east side of Urbana and some of those in other parts of town are increasingly upset with a council that does not represent their needs or concerns. The current ward divisions place an undue emphasis on representation in the campus area. The proposed map for redrawing these lines is even worse. This gerrymandering has not gone unnoticed by voters. Unfortunately, the majority of voters in Urbana do not have a majority of representatives here. While participation cannot be the only determining factor in representation, too many of the voters of Urbana are being cut out of meaningful participation because of these maps. This is a map that we may have to live with for a long time. The high-growth areas have been concentrated in Ward 6, my ward. By this date, census figures from the year 2000 are already outdated, and in a couple of years, they will be grossly inequitable. You have discussed and negotiated this for a long time, and it's long enough. It's time to put forth a map that is fair and offers equal representation to all residents of Urbana. For a council that is built to reputation as a champion of civil rights and diversity, it's inexcusable for the majority to deliberately seek to exclude citizens from having the representation guaranteed by the Constitution. Given the numerous attempts at changing the proposed map, I realize no one in the majority is willing to give up their political base. If so, I'm suggesting that this council make a move toward fair representation and increase the council size to include two members at large and be elected citywide. Do the fair thing and either give us the representation we deserve with a more equitable map, or add to this council and get the same goals accomplished. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Mr. Ruffner, were you entertained? A question?
Yes, and for two more representatives to run at large.
Yes.
Usually, you know, they say the best man wins. So, are you saying that there's no constituents out there in the city of Urbana that could run against the seven people that's on the council at the present time?
I don't understand what that has to do with it. I'm asking for better representation. The people on the east side have two voices here. That's it.
Are you gonna run for office?
That's none of your business.
You're asking me to consider extending the number of representatives in the city?
Right.
And so, I'm just wondering what makes you think that there would be better representation by having two other people on the council?
It would be two more voices that we can go to.
But they wouldn't be obligated to anybody in particular, though, right?
Yes, they would. They'd be obligated to the citywide.
Okay, no more questions.
Any other questions? Ms. Wyman?
Couple decades ago, the council had representation of two council members per ward district. Would you support doing that?
No.
No. And then the other, I just had a question on one of your statements, or what I gather from one of your statements. Do you think that those then who vote, or when people vote in larger percentages, then they should be more represented, or represented by more people than those who don't?
I can't, I mean, that obviously shouldn't be a determining factor. I mean, it can't be legally. But I question even the numbers. I don't think they're there.
Do you question that the census was inaccurate when it was taken in 2000?
I question its viability in 2004.
And do you have a suggestion of how to remedy the census data from which maps are drawn?
No, I don't.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Ruffner. Mr. Whalen, do you have a question?
Mr. Ruffner, are you suggesting, you're suggesting two council members added at large?
Yes.
In addition to what we have today, that is-
Correct.
Seven wards?
Right. If the map's not going to be redrawn to where it's fair, yes.
If the map is not redrawn and reconsidered. Do you, I guess that, you know, has been done in Champaign.
Yes.
They have that. Do you see that as a better alternative?
I see that as one alternative.
Why is that? I mean, why is the at-large, that is, citywide, elected from the city at-large, afford better representation?
Well, those people have to address people at-large. Right now, I have one voice. I have you. That's it.
Oh, you're lucky.
You're a lucky guy.
(laughing) I'm just kidding. The, so what you mean to say then is that these people at-large will have to represent the total constituency-
Exactly.
Rather than, you're suggesting, majority in a-
Right.
Limited area?
Yes. They would have to, they would have to have a majority of Urbana voters elect them. And right now, the only office is the mayor's office, and I guess the city clerk, but the mayor is non-voting.
Do you see this as favoring, do you see this as favoring a Democrat or a Republican?
I don't know how, I don't know how it could favor the Republicans were outnumbered.
No, but I mean, if you had two new members, is your purpose to increase Republican membership on this council?
It wouldn't do any good, even if we did. Even if both people were Republicans, they would still be outvoted.
I'm just curious. I mean, you know, what's the purpose in your, of your question, or your suggestion? Takes me completely by surprise, but, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Ruffner? Okay, thank you. Next is Diane Marlin, 2203 Boudreau Circle, on at-large council seats.
Good evening. My name is Diane Marlin, 2203 Boudreau Circle. When I heard that citizens were toying with the idea of adding at-large seats to the Urbana City Council, after giving it some thought, I decided that that was a good idea and a reasonable thing to take, to do. I think it would, adding a couple of at-large seats would provide more Urbana residents with the assurance that they might have the opportunity to have a voice on this council and a choice at the polls. And the final straw for me was after watching the debate over the redrawing of the ward map. And I've been kind of concerned over the last few years, the tone and the tenor that's gone on in these council chambers, and it seemed to me that there was a lot more personal acrimony rather than public deliberation on this very important topic. That map should have been a unanimous decision. It should have been arrived at through consensus and careful deliberation. And instead, five members of this council chose to pass a map over the objections of the aldermen from Ward 6 and 7. They overrode the mayor's veto. I think the mayor had some very compelling arguments and reasoning against the map as it was drawn, but you chose to plow ahead anyway. And that's disturbing. I mean, I've lived in Urbana for 30 years, and this tenor, this tone in this chamber is unusual for this city. You were charged with coming up, this is, Urbana has a lopsided population distribution. We're all aware of that. Some wards are going to be small and compact, some are going to be larger and more convoluted. But people need to feel like they have a voice on this council and their voices are being heard. And five of you did not listen to the other two voices. Those two voices, Alderman, Whalen, and Otto, represent over 12,000 people in the city of Urbana. That's a third of the population. You should have arrived through consensus. And in addition, I went back and looked at some vote totals, and I was surprised that they received more votes, the two of them combined received more votes than the five other council members combined. I think it was like 1,684 to 1,581. That's a lot of voices and a lot of votes that should have counted for more in this debate. So I also believe at-large seats may be the best way to approach a city like this with this kind of population distribution and the development going on in the fringe. With some at-large seats, people can go to the polls, and even if races were uncontested in the wards, which in the last municipal election, there were two uncontested races, if there were at-large candidates, at least they'd have a reason and a choice at the polls. So I think a combination of the existing ward seats with the newly adopted map, adding a couple of at-large seats would allow Urbana residents to feel like they, more Urbana residents, to feel like they have a voice in this room and a choice at the polls. As I understand, a proposal like this can be put on the November ballot either through council action or through a citizen's petition. And so I would request that the council allow Urbana voters to consider this and put this question on the November ballot. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Ms. Marlin? Mr. Whalen?
Ms. Wyman, I recall the school board election recently. They went from at-large representation to specific districts.
Right.
Because of the fact that there were not districts represented, there was felt adequately. And the issue was civil rights, people weren't being denied their franchise to vote. Do you see this as having any relationship to that?
I think the issue with the school board was to ensure geographic diversity on the board and make sure all different neighborhoods and all areas of the school district were represented. And so they went to sub-districts. Unfortunately, it was a good intention. Unfortunately, most of those races have been uncontested, and so people don't have a choice there either. It's whoever happens to be running in that particular district. So, you know, I really think in towns this small, with this kind of population distribution, maybe a combination of ward-based seats and at-large seats is really the best of both worlds. And it at least ensures people having a choice at the polls and the opportunity for a voice in this room. Now, depending on who runs and who gets elected, and as Mr. Hayes pointed out, it's the best man or woman who wins, and that's up to the voters. But I think adding these at-large seats would give people an opportunity. And they have to feel like they're included in what goes on in this council. And I am getting the sense from a lot of people that they feel excluded.
Further questions? Okay, thank you. Next is Dwayne Bergeron, 108 West Holmes. Issues arising from the new ward map.
Nobody here but us Democrats, right? We all know each other. I'm Dwayne Bergeron from 108 West Holmes in Ward 7. Joe Whalen, who goes back a few decades with me, encouraged me to speak tonight about issues that I see arising from the community's reactions to the new ward map. Not a matter of, I have to confess, it's been an immediate concern of mine till recently. I think there's two sides to the issue that I'd like to speak to. The problem that some see in the new map, the problem that they see it as fundamentally unfair, and the system that we use to elect council members that is less inclusive and convenient than I think some of us would like. I don't think it's a surprise to anyone that some people would see the new ward map and even the composition of the council itself as inequitable. Our town, like any other, is divided into different neighborhoods which have different needs and expectations. In most essential ways, we are one town, one community. But no one should expect that the East Urbana neighborhood will advocate exactly the same agenda and policies as the outlying newer subdivisions south of Windsor and east of Philo Road and Lyman Avenue. We all understand that as neighborhoods, we necessarily compete for our city's services from different infrastructures, different human expectations, and we're like children in a large family, I think. We're all, we are all prepared to think that we're not getting our share at the table. In Urbana's case, the perception that some neighborhoods have more influence in City Hall, that the ward maps have been rigged, just a perception, please, is unhappily supported by the political geography, which has been alluded to. For Democrats, a majority of the seven council members come from the same residential area in the near vicinity of Lille School in the old West Side University neighborhood. As an unapologetic member of the Democratic Party, I can hardly complain that my party has such a constellation of talent. But I must say that I worry about the perceptions of inequity that it arouses, the assumption that city government invariably tilts toward a particular party and a particular neighborhood's point of view. In politics and in individual lives, perceptions matter. Sometimes perceptions matter more than reality itself. I believe that your influence as leaders in the community and the standing of both parties may suffer if reasonable complaints are ignored and the issue is passed over. We risk enmities that will sabotage our best work. And as a resident of the community and the county for 30 years, and someone who's had a good view of the work of both the city and the county board, I have to stress the idea that old enmities, more than anything, have interfered with real progress. My second concern has to do with the situation of Councilmember Otto. As I understand the problem, he bought a house in his old ward, but redistricting placed the house outside of his new ward. If he moves into the new house, he can't run for the council that he now occupies. Now, it seems reasonable to think that periodic redistricting, if done rationally, would ordinarily create problems for an incumbent here and there. Can't miss everybody. However, it doesn't seem right that a candidate, a good conscientious incumbent, should have to sell a house and move his household to qualify to run for the Urbana City Council. Furthermore, I think the present system of ward elections, which requires a candidate to run an award, is probably keeping some well-qualified citizens out of council races. They don't wish to compete with incumbents they like, respect, or who are simply incumbents and look too strong to beat. I'm not arguing with this, my comments tonight, that the new ward map accommodate Councilman Otto, sorry, or anyone else, but I am saying that the present system of electing one council member from each ward needlessly restricts recruitment and even retention of good leadership. And I have more experience, again, with the frustration of trying to recruit county board members. You know, are we dealing with a similar thing when it comes to, I hear you saying that we're dealing with a similar thing when we deal with the school board elections. It's hard to recruit people. I don't know how hard it is to recruit people to run for council, but every unit needs good leadership. So what I'm gonna say in conclusion is that addressing both issues, would you consider enlarging the council by creating several at-large seats in addition to the ward seats? Wherever a party in power chooses to draw a ward boundary, another party or interest usually can make a plausible accusation that the line is part of a gerrymandered map. Oh, the villainy of American politics. The same accusation, however, cannot be made about at-large seats representing an entire political unit. There's one thing. The availability of at-large seats also serves to recruit candidates, I believe, until shown otherwise, candidates who might otherwise defer to incumbents in their own wards and choose not to run. Thank you for your consideration. I have a few copies.
Questions? Ms. Pat?
I have one question. Your description of what happened to Mr. Otto's house was incorrect.
I was afraid that I picked up all the details.
Right. The, um, his house was not, he did not buy a house in his ward and then had the map changed. He bought a house around the corner from Ms. Huth in her ward and in her same precinct, and then asked council members to change the proposed maps in order to, and to divide the precinct that Ms. Huth lived in, in order to give him a different ward, or put his, the new house that he wanted to move into, into a different ward than the ward that Ms. Huth's house was in. Does that, separate from the issue of at-large, it's just because you raised that, does that change your perception about what the council should have done?
No. Because, well, first of all, I didn't call up anyone to talk about your situation, Milton. My fault for not doing background, but I got all my information from the news, I got all my information from the news, 'cause that's easy for me to misunderstand. I really, on reflection, I think the argument to me is persuasive that we're gonna pull some leadership out. If we had two or three, I don't know how many, at-large seats, it would mean, it might mean that two more people would be elected from the academic enclave. But the point is that I wouldn't, if I chose to run, I wouldn't have to defer to the incumbent alderperson. I don't have to, let's see, seven.
Open seat.
Yeah.
Making a second seat available would be okay, but I really think, I really think some people, some personalities, particularly business people, people who are well-known over a long period in the community, would stand a good chance of being elected in a citywide race. You know, as opposed to people who could simply turn out a high, who not, I don't mean to diminish that achievement, but people who turn out a high vote in a particular ward.
Any other questions for Mr. Bergeron? Otto?
Yeah. Well, I don't wanna go through and rehash the whole ward wing, but, you know, you shouldn't feel too bad. There were certainly plenty of other changes that were made in that map of a block here and a block there to accommodate other requests from council. The house that I bought was across the street from where the line was drawn for a vacant ward that did include my current residence. So, it was an accommodation I asked for, and they declined, and I guess we'll leave it at that, although other accommodations were made at the request of city council members.
Any other questions? Yeah, thank you, Mr. Bergeron. Next, oh, Mr. Whalen?
Just wanna say, I asked you to speak when you expressed to me your interest. Isn't that right? I mean, this, I didn't, my suggestion didn't precede your interest.
We were talking. Joe and I, Joe and I, Peg, his sister, and I go to the same church regularly, and Joe and I go to the same church irregularly. I know his wife, Pat, since we both worked at the geological survey. But you really seem to be cheered up by the prospect of me coming out here and advocating this.
Well, no, I think your suggestions are very thoughtful, frankly.
Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Bergeron. Next is John Varela, 404 West High, apartment 10, on a ward map.
Hello. I'd also like to talk about the ward map, but from a slightly different perspective. As a youngster at the University of Illinois, I'm often asked what improvements can be made in Champaign, Urbana to help attract talented young individuals like me, stay in the community. While many of the programs of this council are great, the ward map is a horrible addition to this. One of the biggest reasons is, just by buying a home, that's one of the most important decisions a young person is going to make. Well, if you're at all politically active, this ward map is horrible. Either as Mr. Sathaswait noted in the actual discussion of the ward map, you literally have to carry a large fold-out map, if you're looking for a pre-existing home, to make sure that you end up in a certain ward, if that's one of your goals. Several of the ward boundaries are, well, I understand, reasonable, kind of occur close together. In my own precinct of Champaign 8, that ward is split between, that precinct is split between two wards, and two of the adjacent wards are also, I'm sorry, two of the adjacent precincts are also in different wards. So, it's the same community. I walk it all the time. It feels to me very much like the same neighborhood, but if I want to maintain a distinct ward for some reason, I have to be very careful about that. On the other hand, if I want to buy a new home, I don't have to take the map at all, because I know it's automatically going to be in Ward 6. So that, to me, I get very hesitant about doing that, just simply because I do think my vote is going to be very underestimated if I were to move into Ward 6. Just some figures to bring to the table. The census estimate for Urbana was listed as 36,395 people. So that says that if we're just divided by seven, the average ward should be about 5,200 people. I wasn't able to find the minutes for a couple of discussions when I heard Ms. Huth list the exact number for Ward 6, but if I'm correct, that's listed in the census as around 5,600 people. So that's already a little bit bigger than the average should be right away. The second problem, and this is where I really would get worried about buying a home in Ward 6, would be that the census estimates that Champaign, Urbana has grown by approximately 2,330 people. So this means that the average ward growth should be about 332 people. As Mr. Sathaswait noted in his veto letter, there's been 301 new single-family homes in Ward 6 alone in the last three years. So even if only a single person lived in each of those homes, we're already very close to reaching that average ward limit. Now, another thing I'd like to talk about is a comment that I think Ms. Wyman asked of Mr. Ruffin, and that is, you know, are you saying that we should focus on the people who actually turn out to the elections? Mr. Ruffin answered, no, and that's clearly the right answer. We can't try to gerrymander a ward based on who actually shows up. But one of the things I think at-large members do, and this was alluded to by one of the previous speakers, is that in Ward 6 and 7, approximately 1,000 people came out to vote in both of those elections. If I'm an at-large city council member, I'm either, I've either gotta do one of two things. One is raise the population of people who actually vote in some of the west Urbana districts, which I think would be a great idea. I think it would help balance a lot of these issues of fairness. Or, or campaign more heavily in Ward 6 or 7, giving some of the people who feel ignored right now more of a voice. I'm open to any questions.
Questions for Mr. Varela.
I have a thousand questions. You know, this has been something I've been interested in for a long time. It comes as no surprise, I'm sure, to anybody that, that- It comes as no surprise, I'm sure, to anybody that, that, that I am interested. I, I wonder about the efficacy of it. That's the thing that concerns me, what would be the result? And I think you just nailed it down with, by saying that the, those people would see where the larger number of votes are and campaign there, and therefore that would be their constituency, and they would represent that better. And that might be what this is all about. I mean, anybody who lives in the 6th or 7th ward or East Urbana would certainly recognize that. I know, this recently, I've been out talking to people over in Savannah Green because of their, their concerns about a couple of things. Parking on Florida Avenue, which is questioned by the city, and the streetlights, which the developer promised them and they've changed. And so, as I talk to the people, I'm quite surprised to find that they, almost to a person, express a lack, or, or, lack of trust in our city politics because of the fact that they don't have more of a voice.
But you'll have a chance of petitions and communications yourself in just a moment. Do you have a question for Mr. Varela?
What I was trying to find out was, where do you, where do you verify these figures that you're talking about? I mean, this was.
So, the, the census estimates came from the Bureau of Census websites. The 301 new single-family homes came from Mayor Sathaswate's veto approximation, and the Ward 6 and 7 data are what I'm remembering from county clerk documents that I've received, or that I've, that I've looked up on the website, on the county clerk website.
You're using those numbers to substantiate your, your concern?
Mm-hmm.
That was my question. Around, thank you, Mr. Varela?
Varela.
Varela.
Any other questions for Mr. Varela? Okay, thank you. Any other petitions and communications from members of the public, from council members? Mr. Waylon?
Uh, yeah. As I said, I, I'm not talking to people in Savannah Green, and the, apparently, the, the problem of parking over there on Florida Avenue has been resolved temporarily. And that's a good thing, because gee whiz, they have no parking there other than on the side streets. And of course, if that ever becomes a thoroughfare to 130, the traffic is going to be heavy, and we don't need obstruction like we have on Springfield Avenue by the university, where they narrowed the street and you, you have to stop for the pedestrian with a Sherman tank. But, well, I mean, as if you were, I mean, the Sherman tank is much heavier than a person, and so is a car. I think that's goofy over there, frankly. But, to get aside, so that, that, that concern of those people is, has been temporarily resolved. That's good. And that was, I think, because of the councils, the council listening to them, and the staff. The other one that comes up is the lighting over there. The developer promised a certain type of light, and it was, it was shown in the drawings that he used to sell the properties. And that's not what's going to happen. And of course, it's not going to happen because of the, they came to the staff, to the unit, to the city staff, and they said, well, what kind of lights would you use? And, and staff in its, in its wisdom, great wisdom, and they are, those engineers are just, are top-notch when it comes to doing what we do ordinarily, they said, well, this is the kind of light that we would use. So then the developer used that as a default. And, and that's not what they, he promised the people. He promised the more decorative lights. And so I think, I would like to see that put on our agenda, or I would like to see that addressed by our, our engineering staff, our, our public works staff. I don't mean to.
The lighting in Savannah Green?
Lighting in the Savannah Green neighborhood.
Okay.
And then, finally, I, well, not, I can see, you know, that, what the population concerns of some of these people, that Savannah Green is heavily populated, it looks like Soho. I mean, the houses are one right after the other with little alleys in between, and it is, it looks like Brooklyn, New York, or Milwaukee, I don't know what, but it's, it's certainly, and I, I had, I'll have to walk that as one, as a council member if I run for a reelection. I'll have to walk that door-to-door, and that's a, that's a big job. I mean, gee whiz. And then I have to screw up to Berenger Commons and go from around there, and then I have to scoot down to Myra Ridge, which of course is, you know, all over the place, if I run. But in any case, those are my concerns with dealing with. That's, I guess that's, for now, that's about it. Thank you for listening.
Okay. Any other petitions or communications, Mr. Otto?
Yeah. I believe next week I'm chairing the committee of the whole, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. I'm going to go ahead and put this issue on the agenda for the committee of the whole so that the public can have a chance to address this properly, and we can have a proper discussion of it. I think the people who come here tonight, it's a bipartisan issue, and it's a bipartisan concern. Anybody who cares about representative government and making sure that everybody has a chance to have a fair input into city government should care about this issue, and it's one that we ought to discuss. It's one of those things, it's a fact of life in this community, is that we have a large university, we're privileged to have it, and we're also privileged to have a lot of students in the community who attend the university. It's also a fact that, while there are some students who take an interest in politics, and perhaps a smaller fraction of those who take an interest in local politics, the fraction of those who vote in city elections is really quite small. And so, the traditional way of looking at things and drawing ward maps means that necessarily those who live adjacent to large concentrations of student populations in the city have a hugely disproportionate voice in city affairs to those who do not. And that is, people who live on the west side of Urbana live adjacent to those populations. And it's one of those things, it isn't a Democrat issue or a Republican issue, but everybody ought to feel like they have the same voice in city affairs as anybody else. And since there's no way to distribute the student population among wards to try to balance things out, if we have a at-large city council member, or two at-large city council members, this means everybody in the city, those students who want to vote, those people who currently live in West Urbana, and those people who live in East Urbana, have the same vo, the same voice, the same opportunity to influence that person and to require them to be attentive to their concerns. Is it the perfect solution? Does it solve everything? No. But it certainly is, I think, perfectly clear, to the point of not really even being debatable, that it would be a huge improvement over the current system, which privileges a few at the expense of the many.
Well, then, you want the issue of at-large council members to be on the next committee agenda?
That's right.
Mr. Waylon?
After finishing what I had to say, I was hoping to add that too, and I'm glad that Milton did add it to the agenda so that we can discuss it. Perhaps the council will see a good reason to add this to a referendum and let the people choose. But also, I would like to bring up the fact that there's been some mention made to me of the haulers. Some of the haulers don't have licenses, apparently. And some, and the ones who do are complaining that they're driving around hauling garbage without a license, some of them. And I would like to have that put on the agenda so that we can get some information from our environmental officer.
Okay. Well, we can dig into that and find out if there's any truth to that. We'll bring that back in the next meeting. Any other petitions or communications? Ms. Wayman?
I just want to comment. Certainly, I, I talk about the issue of ward representation with my constituents and with people throughout the community, and though Mr. Otto seems to say that because he believes an issue should be one way, that it's not debatable.
That's not what I said.
It's what I understood, so I'm glad it's not how you feel. But I think that it'll be important, and certainly to recognize that because a different number of voters turn out for an election, whether it's a city election, a federal election, or a state election, that that doesn't mean that the representation is not equal, because as everyone should know, the statutory requirements and constitutional requirements state that there has to be an equal number, equal population, not an equal number of voters. And one of the things that I think a lot of us value in the diversity of our community, and what I love about the ward that I live in now, and the 100-unit building that I live in at Landmark Apartments, is that about, at least in my apartment building, there are probably 30 different languages being spoken there. You walk throughout the halls, you see people in the laundry room, you knock on people's doors, and, and the answer to the door isn't always hello. It's hola, it's, you know, it's, it's villcomen, it's all these different languages. And a lot of the people, of course, are not citizens, or they've applied, they're not citizens either because they don't intend to stay for a long enough time to establish citizenship, or they've applied and it's still 15, 20 years to get a citizenship, to get citizenship in the United States. That doesn't mean that I don't represent them, that I don't want to represent them, and that their values are not important to what I, what I speak at city council and how I vote, nor do I believe that it, it should make a difference for any other council member, whether they are representing someone who voted or didn't vote in the city election for them or for their opponent who might vote or might not vote, or, or who is eligible to vote. And I, and I think that's something that's important to recognize, that the statutory requirements that we see, and that this council met in passing the ward map, was to meet the not-one-voter requirement, not, not to represent and have equal numbers of voters in the wards. That's, would be a violation of the statute, I believe, but an equal population, and that's what is being met. And I, I look forward to future conversations on this council and, and in groups and in, with other residents of Urbana about this. Thank you.
Further petitions and communications, Ms. Patton?
I would love to enter the debate, but since this item was not on the agenda and we've been going 45 minutes, I think maybe it's time to move on. I did just want to point out one, two pieces of information. One is Mr. Wayman is the chair next week, not Mr. Otto. And, and any council member can get an item on the agenda for committee meeting by calling either the chair or the clerk. People don't need to do that here. The other, the other point I'll just, I'll just bring up is that next Monday night is, is the beginning of the Democratic Convention. Am I right? Does that Monday, or does not start till Tuesday? Does anyone know? Because, all right, I just, yeah. Well, if the purpose, if the purpose is to, of, of the timing of this is to keep people who are Democrats from participating in discussion, that would be effective. If that's not the purpose, perhaps putting the discussion off till the next meeting after that would be better.
Mr. Wayman with the council under chain. Mr. Wayman for another petitions and communications?
Just.
If it's a new one.
If I may respond to what Ms. Wayman was saying, and it's, and it's quite true, it is, no, it's not the number of voters, it's the number of population. At the same time, another statutory consideration is the fact that the Supreme Court of Illinois said that the ward should be compact as well as contiguous, and they're not compact.
Well, as, as Pat said, we can debate this next week when it's on the agenda.
Thank you very much.
Any new petitions and communications from council members? Okay, seen none, we'll go first. Before we get to the first one here, Ms. Walden, did you have any?
Yeah, I just had a couple of comments. One, as, as, as you all know, last Tuesday, we experienced a very heavy storm in Champaign-Urbana, and boy, was Urbana lucky. By Wednesday morning, we had cleaned up less than a dozen trees or so that were down in the public right of way, there were a few down on private property. And we, we really dodged a bullet in Urbana on that particular incident. We did provide some assistance, about five of our employees for three days, I believe, we did assist with the City of Champaign and some of their cleanup. As you recall, they were quite a bit of assistance to us when we had our problems with the tornado. And, and I, we, we helped them with their cleanup, but we were extremely fortunate and we were, we were completely cleaned up by noon the following day.
Yeah, thank you.
And we do have a TIF report.
Yeah, let me just, one other thing before we get to Ryan and a TIF report. The Library Board and Library Foundation Board forwarded on to me a, a cooperative agreement that they've both passed along with a master plan, and they request that this come to the city council. So I'll pass this out and let you know that it will be on next week's agenda as well. And I'll do a short cover memo for the packet. With this information, do you need this in the packet as well, or will this suffice?
Thank you.
Would be the same thing? No, not necessary.
Okay. So I look forward to a, what is called a second, second cooperative agreement between the Library Foundation, the Library Board, and the city, as well as a master plan that was passed by the foundation and the Library Board for the library. Ryan, you want to go ahead with the discussion of the downtown TIF District 1 Plan Amendment?
This is a, this is kind of a follow-up to the June 28 Committee of the Whole meeting. Wherein I presented an ordinance for setting the time and place for a public hearing for a proposed Plan Amendment to the Tax, Income, and Finance District Number 1, generally consisting of the downtown area. And for anyone who wasn't here at this meeting, this again is a amendment to the original TIF plan for the core downtown area, including pretty much everything south of the railroad tracks and downtown along Broadway, Ray Street, including the historic Main Street area. And that TIF was established in, in 1980, and is set to expire at the end of, of this year. And we do have municipal authority to extend that TIF district for up to an additional 12 years. And because of the fact that we did the downtown strategic plan and comprehensive updates, and there are a number of redevelopment projects and other, other improvements to downtown that we would like to accomplish in the downtown TIF, we did this Plan Amendment to allow availability and authority to complete a number of projects in that area. And the schedule that I had attached to that memorandum has all the dates for the process of adoption for that Plan Amendment. And last time, you, you probably didn't have enough time to go over that proposed Plan Amendment, so I just wanted to have this time available for, to get any council input or questions about that proposed Plan Amendment.
Any questions or comments?
Yes, Ms. Chairman?
There are a few questions. The, in your memo, you state that the funds not needed to complete the projects laid out in this plan would be distributed back to the various taxing bodies. Two questions with that. One is, is that, is that something unique for this amendment, or is that typical language for all of our TIF agreements? That's question number one.
That is, that is something that we're, we're doing specific to this TIF, because of the fact that we're just not going to require all of the funds, because this is going to be focused on only new settlements and redevelopments from the end of this year onward. So the rest of that money is going to be surplus, according to the Tax, Income, Allocation and Redevelopment Act. There's a certain amount that can be designated as surplus, it's based on the school-stating formula, and. Anything that's been generated as increments up to this point will also be redistributed.
So the, the surplus stipulation?
So the surplus stipulation, is that, and 34%, is that specific to this amendment, or is that in our other TIFs?
Are they specific to this amendment?
Okay. And so, they, they, when you say the projects laid out, just so I understand that, does that refer to the projects on page 20, Table 3, the things that's state-specific locations and potential, I know these are estimates, but potential dollar figures with those?
Yes, those are the projects that we are laying out as potential projects for development in the area.
So if something cropped up that doesn't fit here, but is in the TIF, it's not an eligible project for the funds?
It could be, we would have to, it would probably have to be amended again, probably.
Otherwise, it could be still designated from other funds.
Okay. And the, and given that we're talking about a 12-year span, so a lot of things can happen during that time, what, what's the reasoning behind the specificity of this list?
I just, I believe it's just for accountability from a state level and.
The State Act on Amendments, or the State Act on TIFs generally?
Generally, and on the amendments.
Okay. So did our TIF 1 originally have a list of things like this and improvements were only for, okay. So just trying to understand the differences between that. And then, a second question. Let me look just at page 24, I have a note. Is there a, the 34%, is that what was originally the tip in terms of, stipulating at what point the surplus funds kind of kicks in? Is that something that was originally in TIF 1 and is changing with this amendment? I mean, it was originally in TIF 1 and being preserved in this amendment?
That wasn't an original part of, part of the original TIF.
So there wasn't surplus funds in the original TIF? So we're kind of stipulating that now?
Well, in any given year, if there is increment generated that's not accounted for in the plan, that you don't designate for certain projects, it's.
Generally, there's always something that we can spend that money.
Yeah. And the, and then at the end of the year, surplus funds are declared and distributed to taxing bodies, is that correct?
Or is they become?
Oh, is they become available?
To be distributing.
Okay. Nope, those are all, thank you.
Yes, Mr. Walden?
We plan on distributing surplus funds no later than November of 1 of any calendar year.
Okay.
Any questions or input on the TIF amendment? Okay, thanks, Ryan.
Just another thing, this will be on again for, we're at the end of the discussion after we've done the two interview board meetings for the next week and a public hearing which will be September 7th, so this will be probably not till September will be on the agenda again, but we'll have those hearings.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to new business. The first item on new business is an ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of an annexation agreement. This is 2209 North Willow Road, Pega Harnack and Ivana Badulik. Yes, not that easy for me to say, with a name like Satterthwaite.
Pega Harnack is the owner of the one-acre tract of property of 2209 North Willow Roads, northwest corner of Willow and Anthony. The property is surrounded on three sides, but is not annexed into the city. It contains an old, single-family house that isn't used for presidential purposes anymore. Mr. Harnack purchased the property and intends to establish a small-scale laboratory research, or prototype research in refrigeration and air conditioning. This use is currently allowed in the zoning district in Champaign County, which is light industrial, although we have spoken and mutually agreed to enter into an annexation agreement to property into the city with a commercial zoning district. This case is really one of a, more of a long-term interest for the city. This is an area where our comprehensive plan desires commercial uses, and we would like to eventually someday see a commercial redevelopment on this site, similar to Michelle's bridal across the street and the O'Briens, et cetera. So this agreement would ensure that over the long term, this property is owned commercial. In the immediate term, Mr. Harnack, the agreement specifies that Mr. Harnack would be able to operate his laboratory. There was a rezoning hearing with the Plan Commission on July 8th. They unanimously recommended approval of the zoning. Have an answer any questions, and Mr. Harnack is here also. I will note there, I did actually, Councilmember Hayes spotted a couple typos in the agreement where it refers to the existing zoning as Champaign County R5 manufactured home. That should be light industrial, and we'll make those changes, it's in two spots.
Hey, any questions? Motion would be in order?
Move approval?
Second.
Okay, and I assume that was with the corrections?
Yes, sorry, with the corrections, thank you.
Okay. Any discussion? There's no discussion, will the court please call the roll?
Ms. Chenoweth?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Ms. Huth?
Yes.
Mr. Otto?
Yes.
Ms. Pat?
Yes.
Mr. Wyman?
Yes.
Mayor Satterthwaite?
Yes. That motion carries with six eyes, welcome to the City of Urbana. And we'll move on to item two under new business, an ordinance approving the designation of the Buena Vista Court Historic District under the provisions of the Urbana Historic Preservation Ordinance. This is number one through number eight, Buena Vista Court.
Thank you.
Ms. Bell?
Thank you, can you hear me?
Yeah, if you'd talk right into that thing, I think we can.
Right, this is a request, like you said, for a designation for a local historic district to be named Buena Vista Court Historic District. The property would be Urbana's second local historic district, although it is currently a National Register Historic District, it would be designated through this process and under Urbana Historic Preservation Ordinance. Our other historic district in Urbana is the Joseph Royer Historic District on Oregon and South Bucy. The Historic Preservation Commission met twice regarding Buena Vista Court Historic District application. First, to make sure that the application met the criteria in the ordinance, and then they had a public hearing to consider it and hear any public testimony, and they voted in June, four to zero, to forward it on to City Council and felt that it did meet the criteria in our ordinance to be designated as a local historic district. The historic district would include eight bungalows built in 1926 with the Spanish colonial revival architecture style. There's also two objects that would be contributing for this historic district, that would be a bird bath and an entry arch included in the application, and also included as part of this historic district application. And I just briefly wanted to go through the ordinance criteria. There are three criteria that a historic district needs to meet to be considered under our local ordinance. First would be that the Buena Vista Court Historic District, does the properties do yield high integrity in terms of architecture, community planning, and community cohesiveness and social heritage? Historic Preservation Commission also felt that the district was representative of the distinguishing characteristics of architectural type, that again being a combination of Spanish colonial revival and craftsmen architectural styles and features on the homes and within the objects. And also that the historic district is identifiable as an established, familiar visual feature, and I think we all know where the Buena Vista Court is located, in Urbana. Also, that it is the only Spanish colonial revival-style bungalow court in Urbana-Champaign area, so that also makes it a unique, identifiable district within our community. Another criterion would be that, under our ordinance, a historic district needs to contain a contiguous grouping of properties, and this application and this district does meet that. And again, also that the historic district needs sufficient historical integrity to convey a sense of historical time and place. The Buena Vista Court does display a bungalow court style, a common layout in the early 20th century, and these factors, we feel, strengthen the district by providing a sense of historical time and place, and unique to the Midwest, and again, unique to our community. The City Council has the following options. You may approve the request for the proposed historic district, deny the request for the proposed historic district, or request any additional information that was not presented at the Historic Preservation Commission public hearing that took place on July 7, 2004. Staff recommends that Urbana City Council approve the proposed Buena Vista Court Historic District as presented, and I'll take any questions about the application.
About this, right now, Ms. Wyman?
Ms. Bell, do you want to just review a couple of the protections that the property owners are provided with, with a historic preservation designation?
Of the protections would be?
Well, I guess the protections within their own district, and one of the things that we talked about at the neighborhood meetings and that seemed to grab a lot of the residents of the district as very important was the idea of demolition permits and the sort of the extra stuffs that are required. And so I'm wondering, just because this is such, this is kind of a fragile area as it's surrounded, on one side, there's significant multifamily, on the other side, there's business to protect this neighborhood and the neighbors with each other. Is there some discussion you can provide about those protections?
Definitely, as I spoke before about our historic preservation ordinance, we need to have a contiguous grouping of properties, and the Buena Vista Court Historic District, if one of these eight properties were demolished, or two properties were demolished, it would really take away from the community cohesiveness, which is a significant part of this application and also a significant part of, again, the historical integrity of this proposed district. Under our Historic Preservation Ordinance, one would not be able to buy one property and demolish it and take away the value of the other properties, and that really seemed to ring clear, I think, with the residents and owners of the Buena Vista Court Historic District.
As long as you're talking about benefits of historic preservation, I always get confused between which ones are, which, they're tax benefits, and I mix up which one is the commercial and which one's for residential. Is it the tax freeze that applies for residential properties that are designated historic?
That isn't, those are state programs, and I believe that the tax freeze could be for a residential or a commercial.
And what, under what circumstances do they, is that benefit available? If they do certain improvements?
I believe it's based on EAV of a property and just any substantial improvements that meet the standards for the Secretary of the Interior's guides, historical guides, and they would have to apply through the state. I do have a lot of literature to provide Buena Vista residents or any residents about those, but I kind of hesitate to speak to all the intricacies of that, of those programs.
I need to put you on the spot.
Okay, that's okay.
But folks, for people who want to, it's a state program, but it affects their local property tax, and that is something, that is information they can get from the city if anyone's interested, is that right? If they contact Community Development?
Certainly, yes, and we can put them in contact with the right people at the state to.
Thank you.
Yeah, I know, just to follow up on that, there are some benefits for commercial historic buildings as well, that if you do certain improvements, then those improvements can qualify for tax credits for the building, and some of those older commercial buildings qualify whether they're designated as historic or not, but the percentage is higher if it is designated as historic. So for some of the downtown buildings, that might be something that they would want to consider. Any other questions? Yes, Ms. Chenoweth?
Yeah, I had, this is always the, the only question I usually have about historic preservation is, has to do with windows, it's energy efficiency. Knowing, I've always loved these houses, ever since the, what, the nine years ago when I moved here, I remember being completely charmed by these houses. I've always wanted to try to live in one. Unfortunately, I don't think they come up for sale very often because they're beloved houses. And I now have a different house, so there's not that issue there. But I, I know that in looking at these houses, that I believe that the windows aren't, that some of the window treatments, I guess, in windows are actually maybe perhaps not the original windows, is that correct? Are all the windows original?
It depends on the house. Some homes are, are my understanding, have, all the windows aren't original, and some, there's a mix of some that are original and some that have been redone in the past 20 or 10 or 5 years.
Do you know, okay, do you know if the homeowners in the homes that, in all of these homes, if they're able to upgrade the energy efficiency of their windows with the historic preservation designation, or does that prohibit them from doing that?
I think it could be possible, but that would be up to the Historic Preservation Commission as far as like their expertise on giving advice on different kind of windows that are out there and putting them in touch with other contractors and.
So changes in windows would have to go before the Historic Preservation Commission?
I believe that would be correct, yes.
Okay.
Just to follow up, they're probably not bound by the same standard, Ms. Chenoweth, if you're referring to Urbana Free Library, where the State Historic Preservation Commission rejected our attempt to put in historically correct but insulated, well, not insulated, but higher R-value windows. And they said even though we would try to get the Mullions to look similar to the original, that it didn't meet their standards. Now, I don't believe that we have, our commission has to live up to those same standards and gives us a little bit more flexibility.
Okay. And then I also, we just got a memo from a resident of, speaking to some sections in the ordinance, and I guess the copy of the, this is Maria Ryan's July 7 memo, and in looking at the ordinance and looking at the section she's referring to, I can't make the two match. So I'm wondering, Ms. Bell, if you've had an opportunity to look at her memo, and if you could perhaps direct us to the sections that she's referring to in the updated ordinance?
Sure, I just had it here, just a couple seconds.
Ms. Chenoweth, she's also here, if you want her to speak to.
Yeah.
I believe Maria was also, there was some discussion also from Buena Vista Court resident to Nancy Wieling, talking about this at one of our Historic Preservation Commission meetings, and I'm glad that she wrote this letter to also, you know, memorialize these in a memo here. There was some discussion about, or occupants of a home, and if one did apply for a certificate of appropriateness with the Historic Preservation Commission, what would, what would happen if it was denied, and if there was a certificate of economic hardship? You know, what would the criteria be based on with the Historic Preservation Commission in reviewing an application like that? And so we did discuss that part of the ordinance that looked at a long list of economic criteria that would be reviewed by the Historic Preservation Commission, so let me find these sections.
And that's my understanding that the proposals are different than the proposal that's on the table. These are proposals to change the Historic Preservation Ordinance.
Right.
Other than the ordinance that's before us today. So, is that correct?
These are, yeah, addressed to possible changes or just to make our ordinance a little bit better.
And are the section numbers in Maria's memo, 7, 6, in both cases, are they accurate? So that I would, okay.
Right, the first one would be page 28. Right, the first one would be page 218, section 12, 6E, 2K, and that's under certificate of economic hardship, and it's part of the section that gives information to assist the Preservation Commission in making a determination on an application.
Okay.
And also, in that same section, except, there were some comments about special emergencies or life safety circumstances, there was a little bit of discussion on, you know, what if my house was leaking so much, you know, that I couldn't go to the Historic Preservation Commission, what would happen then? And that is on page 219, and she's suggested adding something that, or conditions that are likely to result in further substantial damage to the building's structure or objects, so they are.
Okay, yeah, thank you for those page references, that'll help.
Thank you.
Are there other questions?
No, I'm finished, thanks.
For clarification, is something being done with these recommendations? Because this is directed to the Historic Preservation Commission, but it was given to us, is that something that Historic Preservation Commission is going to take up, or does the City Council?
I don't know, this is the first I've heard of it, so I don't know if it's been called to, presented to the Historic Preservation Commission for their next meeting, I don't know, except for the.
Do you know?
On August 4th, is our next meeting.
Do you know if this is an agenda item for them, or?
I'm sorry, I wasn't at that meeting.
Right. They were, the ideas were just presented as something to consider for a future text amendment to the zoning ordinance, next time we revisit the Historic Preservation Ordinance, or maybe pick up an omnibus type of text amendment to different sections of the zoning ordinance, so they're not placed on any agenda right now for, as an action item.
Okay. Any other questions?
Just a point, I spoke with Dr. Ryan before the meeting, and she said it didn't have to be addressed right away, but just as Mr. Kowalski said, just when it's, when these issues, when changes are looked at, at the Historic Preservation Ordinance to include this, so I don't know whether you put a tickler in, or just include it in the file, or that sort of thing. Thanks.
Any other questions? Bill, I had a question about, some of the description, you were saying there is a common courtyard, and arch, and some common sidewalks, and so forth, and I noted there was a little bit of discussion about that in the, at the Plan Commission. So how are the, are those features addressed if, is there a homeowners association that deals with the common areas? Is it Buena Vista, or is it, how are those common areas maintained and?
Actually, the site, the overall site would be a contributing object, and the site is really eight properties, just eight square properties.
Okay, so there's really no common area, it's all, okay, so.
The sidewalk is actually.
Of the courtyard, each house has a portion of the courtyard, and a portion of the sidewalk system, and that's their responsibility.
Exactly, it's a courtyard-style development, although that sidewalk is a private easement that runs.
Right.
You know, through their development, but they are responsible in.
Okay.
Each of them for mowing their area, but I think that they do well.
Okay, just curious. Any other questions? No other questions, the motion would be in order, Ms. Wyman?
Move, we approve the, this historic preservation, this historic district?
Second. A motion of second to approve the Buena Vista Court Historic District, and second, any discussion?
First, I want to thank staff for all of their work on this, that we had two neighborhood meetings over at the Phil Streck Center, and I think we're able to address not only the historic preservation questions and concerns and issues, but other neighborhood concerns that came up, so it really helped to handle all the issues, and I appreciate all the extra research that the staff did, and then also, there was a University of Illinois student who did a lot of the preparation and research for this, and right now, her name escapes me, but if you could pass on gratitude to her as well, and then, of course, to Maria Ryan, who's one of the new historic district residents, as of tonight, who came, and I know has come to the other meetings, and certainly all of the residents who have, just, I want to express my appreciation, I think they all gave a lot of important information and detail about the district, and each of them had some different information. Hugh Phillips had talked with someone who had done a huge background of Buena Vista Court, and shared that with people as well, so appreciate again all your work. Thanks, thank you.
Any other discussion, Ms. Chenoweth?
I just want to applaud staff, the residents of Buena Vista Court who helped to make this happen, staff in the Historic Preservation Commission. I was disappointed in the outcome of the move to designate parts of Main Street historic, which failed, and I think that there were some things to be learned from that, from that story, and I think that as we build historic preservation districts in our community, we also have a kind of public education component about what these districts are, what they mean, what the benefits are, what the long-term consequences for the community are, and so with the Royer District, and with this district, I think that helps get that message out. One of the things that I think distinguishes Urbana is the character of its neighborhoods, and the historic character of number of the houses. I come from Gainesville, Florida, and I watched pretty much a large portion of the historic district in that community be demolished because of the pressures of the university and student housing, and we have the similar pressures, and we need to be able to accommodate students and their housing needs, at the same time, I think we need to look at what we have, and we have this community asset that is really unbelievable, and just changes the way in which we move through the community, and how we feel about our community, and so I think that the designation of this is excellent, and I'd like to see more. Kudos to you.
Any other discussion? I'd just like to say that I think this is terrific, you know, I've been in this community a long time, and I've been familiar with Buena Vista Court for much of that time, and I think over the decades, there's been a question of whether it's going to survive as something that the residents can be proud of, or if it was going to deteriorate like some properties do, if they don't get the proper attention and the proper ownership. And I think this really shows that the residents and owners are, take pride in their homes and their neighborhood, and that you can tell by walking through that they are indeed beloved homes, and that the residents of these homes have decided to apply, or go along with the historic district, I think it's just terrific, and there's so many developments like this that could easily have turned the other direction and become deteriorated with other ownership, and it's just terrific to see the pride and ownership of these buildings, and to have it be listed as a historic, on the local historic registry, so congratulations to those homeowners. Any other discussion? If there's no other discussion, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Chenoweth?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Ms. Hoof?
Yes.
Mr. Otto?
Yes.
Ms. Pat?
Yes.
Mr. Whalen?
Yes.
Ms. Wyman?
Yes.
That motion carries with seven eyes. Next, we have an ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of an addendum to amendment to agreement, to an agreement for the Champaign County and Interchange Properties LLC.
Walden? Yeah, I'll handle that. This is an amendment to our agreement with O'Brien's, it's a developer for the auto mall on North 45. We had an original agreement with O'Brien in 2001, and then we received the notice to proceed in July 2001, and that was the time at which he closed on all of the property out there with the Frasca and Valentine, and all of those properties were purchased, and we received the notice to proceed. A portion of that property was then sold by O'Brien to Farm and Fleet for their development. Various reasons, after 2001, that project was held up, although with some progress that was made. We last year amended the agreement, the completion period to 30 to 48 months in our agreement for amendment in 2003. Again, it didn't happen last summer for, and some reasons related to financing. This has now been worked out, the developer and the lender have asked us to clean up this agreement and put the motion date in that reflects reality, extended by a year, so that will require the completion in July 2006. So the intent is to start it yet, this summer, so we'll clean this up for the lenders, and at least clear the way, from our point of view, to proceed. And I highly recommend this amendment.
Any questions? Questions, the motion would be in order?
Move approval?
Second.
Motion for approval on a second, any discussion? No discussion, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Chenoweth?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Ms. Hoof?
Yes.
Mr. Otto?
Yes.
Ms. Pat?
Yes.
Mr. Whalen?
Yes.
Ms. Wyman?
Yes.
Motion carries with seven eyes. Next is mayoral reappointments, you may have thought that you dealt with this last meeting, evidently I didn't have the ability to get all the way through the alphabet, and left the Z's off, and so this is, is bringing to you reappointment of the zoning Board of Appeals members whose terms expired June 30th of this year, and reappoint them to new five-year terms, so that their terms will expire June 30th of 2009, and those people are Anna Merritt, Joe Schoonover, and Herb Corthen, all have agreed to accept reappointment, and I'm pleased to submit them for your approval tonight.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion of second, any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed, motion carries. I'd entertain a motion to go into closed session to discuss pending litigation.
I move to go into closed session for the purpose of discussing pending litigation.
Second.
A motion of second, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Chenoweth?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Ms. Hoof?
Yes.
Mr. Otto?
Yes.
Ms. Pat?
Yes.
Mr. Whalen?
Yes.
Ms. Wyman?
Yes.
That motion carries, and we'll go upstairs to closed session.